Everyone, welcome to our city commission meeting. I see some new faces, so I just wanna remind you all if you would like to speak on any item, there are speaking cards in the back. So Mauricio?
Commissioner Joseph?
Here.
Commissioner Seivisant?
Here.
Commissioner Viscara?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lama?
Here.
Mayor Svetchen?
Here.
All members present.
Great. Everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. David, you wanna lead us again? Thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Is that me or David?
Have I been invoked? invocation please. Welcome.
Hi, good evening, everybody. It's great to see you all. Dear God, Master of the Universe, we stand humbled before you this evening as we recognize all of your blessings that you have bestowed upon us. We are mindful of the fact that you have blessed this city with wonderful leadership, direction, dedication, and guiding spirit, which has resulted in the many successful achievements over the last twenty-seven years. We recognize that we are gathered before you this evening in pursuit of fulfilling your wishes as you, dear God, empowered humanity with seven basic universal laws after the great flood of Noah. These laws were once again reaffirmed by Moses at Mount Sinai to be taught to all of humanity, universal laws that provide a framework of law, order, and justice, which will allow humanity to settle the earth in a civilized manner. We recognize that we have been entrusted by the citizens of Sunny Al's Beach to perform this sacred duty. O mighty God, please provide us with the consciousness to constantly be aware of your presence so that we are consistent to our mandate. Please grant us the wisdom, intuition, sensitivity, and the patience necessary to succeed so that we leave a legacy of having a positive impact upon society for many generations to come. Protect our police force, our servicemen and women, serving domestically and overseas in the name of freedom and democracy. Please give them the peace of mind, insight, and intuition to be successful. Please guide our city staff to make the right decisions with honesty, integrity, and knowledge for all of our citizens into the future. And may they continue to serve as positive role models for our beautiful community. May everyone gathered here tonight and all the residents of Sunny Al's Beach be granted with good health, peace of mind, and prosperity. And let us say amen.
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 Thank you. Mauricio, play the opening remarks, please.
Yes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We appreciate your attendance and thank you for joining us tonight. Before we begin, there are a few important reminders regarding conduct during our commission meetings. Please ensure all electronic devices are turned off or set to silent mode to maintain the integrity of our proceedings. Mutual respect is the foundation of productive discussions. We ask that everyone remain silent and attentive when someone is addressing the commission. Clapping, applauding, heckling, or any verbal outbursts either in support or opposition of the speaker are strictly prohibited. Any individual wishing to address the commission must fill out a public speaker's card and submit it to the city clerk before the relevant item is announced. Each speaker is granted a maximum of three minutes. Should you exceed this time, the chair will notify you to conclude your remarks. Speak directly to the agenda's points, remain concise, and avoid redundancy. Should an individual speak without the chair's permission or continue speaking after a warning, they may be escorted out of the chambers. It is essential to avoid making impertinent, slanderous remarks or becoming boisterous while addressing the commission. Such behavior may lead to being barred from future commission appearances unless the majority of the commission members present vote otherwise. The presiding officer may disallow signs or placards in the commission chamber. Please exit the chamber quietly and without disruption. The goal of our meetings is to facilitate public input and participation. However, disruptive or disorderly conduct hinders our collective objective. Individuals who want to speak on an item on the agenda are asked to fill out a public speaker's card and give it to the city clerk before the item is called. Speakers are asked to speak to the issues, make comments concise and to the point, and refrain from making duplicate comments. All speakers will be limited to one three-minute comment per item. If you exceed the three-minute allotment, the chair will advise you to finish your comment. If you speak out of turn without permission from the chair and/or you do not cease speaking after one warning, you will be escorted out of chambers. In order to maintain orderly conduct and/or proper decorum at these meetings, anyone who interferes with the orderly process of the meetings after a warning may be removed from the meeting and may be barred from further appearance before the city commission as permitted in S two eight six zero one one four FS and SS seven four dash five and seven four dash twenty-one of the city's Code of Ordinances. Any necessary removal will be made at the direction of the mayor and will be carried out by law enforcement or designated sergeant-at-arms. It is essential that attendees adhere to these rules of procedure to ensure productive meetings that serve both the public and the city commission. Thank you for your cooperation and understanding.
Great. So again, welcome, everyone. I'm really happy to see so many new faces in the audience. So I'm going to just throughout the meeting remind you to please fill out the public speaker cards. Everyone, again, has three minutes. Mr. City Clerk, if you could just remember to turn the time on so everyone has the same amount of time. And all comments, questions are to be directed to me and not to any particular commissioner. And we refrain from saying accusing anyone or saying anyone's name. We just, we wanna keep decorum, and what we're doing here is the business of the city. And I wanna remind you also that we have three meetings a month which you can participate in. We had one on Tuesday, and we'll have one on Tuesday again next month, the third Tuesday at ten o'clock. We had an earlier workshop at three thirty, uh, three o'clock, which you can also attend. And then we have this meeting. So welcome. Go ahead, Mauricio.
Okay, the first item on the agenda are the approval of minutes for the special city commission meeting of December eighth, twenty twenty-three, and the regular city commission meeting of January eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. Excuse me, the December eighth meeting is a special city commission meeting.
Okay, I need a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next item is the order of business, and we have a few changes or not really changes, but we have some additional information that was provided for several items on the agenda tonight. The first one being ten H, which is an agreement with Valrose for the replacement of the shade structure at the city hall annex. Some additional renderings were provided. The same for item ten J, the design, the schematic design for the Bellevista Park was added. And for ten K, the zoning map that covers the area that the zoning in progress would apply for has been included. And finally, item seven A, which is the budget amendment ordinance. Some additional information was provided and the memo was revised.
Okay, so just for clarification, there was no, no actual additions. It was additional information for existing items. So the, the, the items stay within the same numbers.
Yes.
Well, I actually have a couple of items of business to present before we get started.
We have an item.
Can I get a motion for these changes?
So moved.
I need a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So you're, you're requesting to add an item to the agenda?
I'm requesting to present some information for a proposal. And I'm requesting to have the time to do that.
Okay, any additions to, any additions to the agenda we need to, we need to vote on?
I understand. So I have, first of all, a couple of finishing up items regarding the city, the state of the city. There were not credits given to certain commissioners and other...
All right, wait, wait, we're, we need to stay on, on topic here.
Well, I am staying on topic.
Okay, so I need a motion for you to add items to the agenda.
Okay, so let's add that.
So you're making a motion?
Making a motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay.
What, what are we adding?
I'm adding credits to the end, stating them now where they were omitted previously, to the state of the city crediting commissioners and other city staff who did work that should be recognized.
Okay, but we're not, we don't have the state of the city on the agenda.
I understand that, but it was already given and it's not being stated again till next year.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay. So in that regard, I would like to, and because the city, state of the city mentioned certain issues regarding the IPAL, I would like to credit Jennifer Viscara.
Wait, 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 we're, we're not going to the item. You said you wanted to add something else?
Oh, okay. Yes, and then I would like to add an issue regarding the Miami Day League of Cities Dinner that we had on February first.
Okay, so I need a motion for that?
I would like to, yes, ask for a motion regarding that, but that can be brought up.
Okay, so I need a second for that?
I have a second.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, then. Good.
All right, next item?
Okay, the next item is seven A, which is an ordinance of the city commission of the city of Sunny Al's Beach, Florida, amending ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash six oh six, approving budget amendment number BA twenty-three twenty-four dash oh one to the city's operating capital improvement budget for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year. The General Fund, American Rescue Plan Act Fund, Capital Projects Fund, and Stormwater Capital Fund, authorizing the city manager to do all things necessary to implement the terms and conditions of this ordinance, providing for an effective date.
Great, thank you. City manager?
Mayor, vice mayor, members of the commission, this is our first budget amendment of the year. And typically, we have these when we are signing purchase order carryovers from one year to the next year. And when we met for our agenda review, there were some additional questions which I provided you with a memo on that provided the details of those answers. But essentially, the unaudited, unaudited fund balance increase of thirteen million, I'm gonna read the first paragraph of the memo. "Over the projected amount seems extraordinary this year, primarily due to the reclassification of eligible general fund expenditures to the ARPA fund." As you may recall, in March and April of twenty twenty-three, you approved a budget amendment that reclassified the ARPA funds into a separate account as recommended by our auditors. At the end of our last fiscal year, the eligible expenses for each department were transferred to the general fund, thus creating an increase in the fund balance for this item alone in the amount of four million five hundred and sixty thousand. An additional seven point one million was due to unspent encumbrances that are also being carried forward. Combine the difference of these leaves a true fund balance increase of just one point four million, which is comparable to the past several years. The balance of this increase is due to fees greater than anticipated for services such as recreation programming, off-duty fees in the police department, parking and permit fees, and higher-than-anticipated revenues from interest earnings and revenue sharings. The city historically has been fiscally prudent in estimating our revenues and expenditures to never end with a deficit. Other things that are part of this budget amendment are recording our unaudited fund balance carryovers for all funds except stormwater funds in the amount of thirteen million. Record purchase order carryovers from September thirtieth, twenty-three to October first, twenty-three for all funds, seven point one million. To record routine transfers from existing budgeted accounts for actual expenditures for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four. Record transfers in ARPA funds to move interest earnings from ARPA funds to the general funds in the amount of one hundred nineteen thousand. Add funds to supplies for Israeli support in three point four million. Increase transfers out of the capital funds for our CIP order carryovers, three point one million. Add funds for our Navarro property taxes, which will be in the amount of ninety-five thousand, which will be reimbursed by the lessee as part of our rental agreement. And adding funds for a gym curtain divider and shade cover replacements at Heritage, Town Center, and Gateway. Record transfers out to the general fund to move interest earnings from ARPA to general funds, one hundred nineteen thousand, and record capital project carryovers. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have public speaker cards?
Not for this item, ma'am.
Okay. Discussion, commission? Commissioner Viscara? Vice Mayor? No? Commissioner Joseph?
Not at this time.
Okay. Commissioner Seivisant?
Yeah, I have a few comments. So I gave you guys a package. You see in page one, we went from one thirteen millions to one twenty-three. So we are adding ten million dollars in fund balance. So that's very interesting because if you go to the page fifty, eh, fifteen, in this past fiscal year, we went from twenty-eight millions in our capital project funds to fifty-three. However, to fifty-three millions with this all-new, um, I wanna use the right word, um, we are doing a...
Adjustment.
Okay, that's a good word. With this new adjustment, again, last year we were twenty-eight millions, now we are gonna be fifty-eight millions because we are adding three point fifty-eight millions to the adjusted capital to go from fifty-three to fifty-seven, or fifty-eight, actually, million dollars. So I, I do have a few questions because I think we are not being fiscally responsible at all. I don't wanna use the word mistake, but ten million dollars, thirty million dollars that we are adding right now, last year it was three, and now this year is three, thirteen. So it's a big difference. So I wanted to go over and ask, I don't know if, because yesterday we were not able to go over every question because I didn't have it at the moment, but in the page two, we have three million dollars for the capital project of... Do you remember for what is that right now? Here, here, the second page. Where is three point fifty-eight? We are increasing that in capital projects. I just wasn't able to find the, the break.
Is that the Center Island?
No.
That's not Center Island?
I don't believe so, but, but... Also, another one that if you can see in the, in the next page, page three, we went from original budget or current budget for holiday lights of one hundred and eighty-five thousand. We are adding one hundred twenty-one, seven fifty to a total adjusted value of three hundred six thousand dollars for holiday lights. I understand for, for the information I got yesterday that this is due to certain bills that we haven't paid from last year. However, I just, I'm very scared that our new base is gonna be three thousand dollars for holiday lights and not one hundred eighty-five. So I just wanna make sure and point it out and leave it on the record that we have to go to our base of one eighty-five. In the following, we see again expenditure for over two, two million dollars, two eighty-three thousand, um, that were, there is an increase. This is about the building department, but I'm gonna go to with more detail to that in a little bit. And in the page number six, you guys, you guys see about the new pier.
Which page?
Six, or the one I gave you. Okay? So we have a current budget of five hundred thousand dollars for, on, it's, we don't have a specific scope of work of what is it gonna be done at the pier. However, we're increasing in two hundred fifty thousand dollars because it's a carryover of the money that we didn't use last year. Page six, here.
I don't have page six.
Six, six.
Oh, you're number six, okay.
So you can see now that there is gonna be seven hundred fifty thousand dollars for the pier. And if you go to the last, last page, you see that this year we are gonna add another one million, seven fifty for a total of two point five million for a scope of work that we don't have yet for a job that apparently is medium priority for the new pier, deeper pier. So what it seems is that we are artificially inflating our budget and we are carrying over every year of money that we are not spending. And then we are gonna, it's always increasing every, every fiscal year. Another example, out of the six point five million that we have for the parking recreation master plan, we haven't spent nothing, and there is a big chance that we are not gonna spend so much money out of it. But it's gonna carry over again for the next year. So if this year we have a, a budget for a hundred and eighty-four millions, what is gonna be the next one? Two hundred millions? So this, eh, this ten, thirty million that they are getting out of nowhere right now, not out of nowhere, that right now we are putting it because now we know the real numbers. I think this is unacceptable. In page eight here of what I gave you, and this is what is more alarming for me, is about the building department. We had a fund balance at the end of twenty twenty-two of eight millions point three, rounding the numbers. Then, um, the projected for, at the end of twenty twenty-three, it was five million fifty-three. The projected at the end of this year is less than one million dollars. So we are going, again, I repeat, in the next page, from eight point three to five point fifty-three million dollars to less than one million dollars. Between the reasons for that happening is, and I quote, "The revenue projection reflects a decrease in building permits and reappraisal." So we are getting less revenue. Why are we spending most? Because there is an increase in personal services, an increase in operating expenses, and an increase in capital outlay. One of the reasons is because we are moving the building department from the second floor, the third floor, actually from the third floor, to Tony Roma's. Now, we had a building there, a restaurant that was actually creating revenue. Now it's gonna create a lot of expense. So we had a building department that is creating less revenue, but we are multiplying the expenses of that, of that. Again, I believe this is reckless and, and I'm completely against, and I believe we can still stop moving the building department to the Tony Roma's that should be a restaurant, that was the, the expectation last year. We voted, we had quotes for the restaurant. They told us, wait, eh, because they are not such a good, eh, quote. And now we are gonna build the, suddenly the building department there. A building that is should be shrinking in, in space and in, in people because now we are digital and we don't have so many big buildings being built anymore because we don't have any more land. So that is part of my, my frustration with the budget. And that's what I say early, I hope for the new, next fiscal year, the, the people get a little bit more involved because I'm sorry to say this, and I don't wanna offend anybody, but these numbers, they don't make sense. We cannot go from eight millions to one million in one year of the, of the fund for the building department. So that's my...
Okay, no, noted. Um, I, I think what I'm getting from, from what you're saying is that we should encourage people to get more involved. And we're starting the, the budget process within the next, uh, Mr. City Manager, remind me, please, in the next month, I believe, you're, you're gonna start having those meetings?
Yes.
Okay, so I, I, I don't know if you had an opportunity because you, you weren't at the agenda review. I...
I was listening.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that. Great. Um, so we, we can certainly, you know, schedule more workshops to discuss this.
Yeah, but...
I don't think there's anything, you know, that precludes that.
Not only that, but the point is that we double the, from twenty-eight millions to sixty millions, the capital outlay for jobs that we cannot perform in one fiscal year. It is impossible. So the point is that we can have that money in the general fund. And when we are gonna need it, we still have that money. So we can easily make the amendments that we are gonna be doing right now to move from the general fund to whatever project we are gonna be doing. But why are we putting money in projects that we, we know we are not gonna be accomplishing or we are not gonna even doing it because we don't have a scope of work? So, and I, I'm coming back about the pier. So we are having at the end of next year, three million dollars almost for the pier. Um, I actually use the pier a lot. I go with my son fishing and I eat in that restaurant. I, I'm lucky enough that I can walk or go in the bicycle, so I don't need to park because I know parking is an issue. But I use it, and it is giving the intended purpose. We go there to walk and to fish. I'm not going there with the expectation that I'm gonna be a seating, air conditioning area in the pier. So we have here millions of dollars to create a shade that I don't believe is the intended purpose of the pier. So why are we putting that money in there? And that's just one example.
No, 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 I understand. I just, I don't wanna go off a tangent because the, the, the public doesn't have, you know, we, this wasn't on the agenda. And I, you, you're, I understand your frustration and most of this, if not all of it, we voted on. So I think that the suggestion...
I voted no for the budget for a reason.
No, I, I'm saying about the shade structure, all of those things. So it, it, I wanna make sure that it's clear for whomever is listening and whoever is in the audience, you know, and I, and I wanna stick to the agenda so we can move it along.
Okay, the only request, Mauricio, can you put this, please, in the, on the record in the, in that item, please?
It'll be part of the, of the meeting record.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect. All right. Um, so with that, I need a motion?
So moved.
I need a second?
Second.
This is voice...
The roll call.
Okay.
So Commissioner Joseph?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Seivisant?
No.
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Svetchen?
Yes.
The ordinance passes on first reading four to one. Second reading will be scheduled for March.
Okay, next item, please.
Next item is now in resolutions. Ten A is a resolution approving a revised investment policy of the city of Sunny Al's Beach.
Do we have, are you gonna read the, who's presenting it? Okay, great. Thank you.
Sorry, Mayor. Mayor, vice mayor, members of the commission, this is based on a prior discussion we have where we are revising our investment policy to include Israeli bonds.
Great, thank you. Do we have any public speakers?
No, ma'am.
All right. Do we have any, this is a second reading. Do we have any discussion or comment from the commission? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to, obviously, I understand the, the reason for this change, but I just think that we should keep our investments US, domestic, and that we should be conservative. That's my comment.
Okay.
I would make a small edit. I don't think it's Israeli bonds. I'm pretty sure it's Israel bonds. I don't know if, um, there's a broader purpose there, but Israel bonds is, is the, was who presented to us.
Scripters are, okay. Anyone else?
No.
All right. I need a motion?
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Alex is a no.
I don't know.
Go ahead.
Ten B is a resolution approving a mutual aid agreement between the city of Sunny Al's Beach and the South Florida Task Force Burglary Apprehension and Vehicles Crimes Unit.
Mayor, vice mayor, members of the commission, this is a mutual aid agreement between the city and the South Florida Task Force for Burglary and Vehicle Crimes Unit, recommended by the police department.
Any public speakers?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Any discussion from the commission? Commissioner Viscara?
I'm good.
Vice Mayor? All right, you need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next item, please.
Ten C is a resolution accepting the Sunny Al's Beach Parks and Recreation Master Plan.
Mayor, vice mayor, members of the commission, this is the acceptance of our Parks and Rec master plan that we discussed in prior meetings.
Okay, do we have any public speakers?
No, ma'am.
All right. Any discussion from the commission? Need a motion?
Yeah, I, I, I'd like to bring some, some, some comments here today.
Go ahead.
So last time when we talked about this, and I understand that this is gonna be a framework on what we're gonna do with our parks for the next five, ten, or twenty years. But anyhow, I did request for other options to be presented because there is in the presentation that we were given, at the end, there is a page where it says this is gonna be around one hundred and ten million dollars. Obviously, it's a big undertaking, and this was, um, this is a reflection of the, um, of the feedback we received from, from our residents, right? I understand the needs, et cetera, but if this is gonna be a, a, a guide or a framework for our staff and for other city commissions to, to work on, I think that we should at least have a different, a range of different options. Because I don't want this to be taken, and since it's gonna be a framework... Because I don't want this to be taken and since it's gonna be a framework for people to think that, you know, it's gonna be a hundred and ten million dollars and that there's no flexibility. So, I, I think it's very logical and simple what I asked before. And I, I, I would like to have this item deferred and then come back, talk to the um, talk to the um, to the consultant that did this. First, I would like to see the numbers behind, the math behind how he got to a hundred and ten million dollars. And then perhaps work on some other options, you know? Let's say the top choice, a hundred and ten million dollars, a mid, and a low. So, people could visualize and see that this is a flexible plan, is not set in stone. And I understand that all these projects come to us, but still, you know, when you put something like that together, which in essence is a budget, a hundred and ten million dollars, you know, I would like to see other options, more flexibility. Because if you take a look at Heritage Park, I think that there's a pool there. You know, it's a big pool. So, I would like to see some other options. I would like to see um, another way of thinking about this, um, where we could look at different, you know, option one, option two, option three, you know, something like that. So, with different budget ranges. So, I would like to have this item deferred. That's my belief and opinion.
Okay, so, oh, wait, one second, are you, procedurally, is, is Vice Mayor is making a motion?
It's a procedural motion, so if there's, if you're in fact making a motion.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to defer.
Okay.
So we could get another option, let's say, option two for eighty million, option three for fifty.
Is there a second?
I have a question first. Can, can I ask Alex a question first?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, if you're looking to defer and you're talking about other options, do you have any of your own ideas for options?
So, so, so before we, we jump ahead to that, first, I would like to see how the consultant got to a hundred and ten million dollars. Okay, the math behind that. And then based on that, you know, talk to the consultant about, let's say we tell him, okay, what can you do for eighty million dollars, still taking into consideration what our residents told us? What can you do with a sixty million dollar option? So, work it that way. Because that way, if this isn't, eh, gonna be a framework for future staff and future commissioners to look at, then I think we should be a little more detailed. I understand that projects come to us one by one for approval, but I think we need to lay some, for this framework to be as, as clear as possible.
Okay, but the way you're thinking about it, you're having a number, you're talking about a number that was thrown out at us for over a length of time. What was it, ten years or fifteen years or something? That doesn't also take into account inflation. So if you started all of that today and you worked through,
Yeah.
then, you know, we would have, we would get to a certain number.
I just, you're making very valid points, but we have a motion right now on the table. So, let's just, do you, do you have a second?
If we talk it through, maybe.
You could still.
If we talk it through, maybe there won't be a need for the motion.
Well, he's making a motion.
No, 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 but Jerry, let, 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 let me, can I respond to him? Just, just because I, I, I don't think he understands the way I'm thinking about it. Because right now, a hundred and ten million dollars, and from the schematics I saw and some of those drawings that he showed us, it looks like the top of the line, right? Uh, for all of the parks, basically.
Wouldn't we want that, though?
No, you're looking at new buildings.
Now we're going into, into de- debate. Wait, hold on, stop. We're going into debate. I, I appreciate what you're saying and I actually agree with it, but we do have a motion on the table. So, just so that we can continue the conversation, do we have a second? I have a question.
But, but I'd like to make my point clear, though.
And, and I believe you did.
Everybody understands.
I just wanna make sure we don't go, we don't veer off. So, Mr. City Attorney, procedurally.
Procedurally, so the item was before you, you haven't obviously moved that item yet. There's been a procedural motion which needs to be acted upon. At that point, if it's voted to defer, you defer the item, the discussion should be had at the time that it's deferred to.
Okay.
Um, for a procedural standpoint.
Right now, we're not deferring. Do we have a second to defer?
I wanna ask him a question.
Alright, one, one question, because we can't get into the discussion.
I just wanna understand what he's trying to accomplish. So, in, you want basically like, you write the gold, silver, bronze plan.
Correct.
So, are you, are you, are you seeking to then produce three different comp- three different master plans? Like, the gold version, the silver version, the bronze version?
No, 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 because, I mean, first, I think we need to understand how, how the consultant got to a hundred and ten million dollars, right? Because if you look at some of the, the, eh, you look at the presentation, I mean, some of these parks, the way he's envisioning them, or the consultant is envisioning them, they, they look awesome. But then instead of having like a huge park, a huge pool, I think we need to start considering, okay, other options, maybe a smaller pool, you know? So I think we need to get into that type of thinking. And if you throw a number at me of a hundred and ten million dollars, let's say we start tomorrow with this, right?
Okay.
Mm-hmm, okay. I understand that this is gonna be a long-term plan, but I think that it should be considered that perhaps there's other ways to approach this. And I think that we should defer.
Alright, so, okay, so, wait, 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 wait. If somebody wants to then, I, I need either a second so that we can continue the conversation, and if somebody else wants to defer, we can still do that so that we can continue the conversation. Because now we're having a conversation about deferring and we don't have that. So do we have a second? Alright, so we're not deferring it. Commissioner Viscara, please go ahead.
Go ahead.
I just, I wanna understand what you're trying to accomplish. So, like if you wanted to see the eighty million, the, the bronze version, the, the silver version, what does that look like for you? Like, is it just a, a, a list of properties? Okay, minus the pool, minus this?
No, 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 no. So, so let me ask you a question. Um, do you know how we got to a hundred and ten million dollars in that presentation?
I mean, I, so I'm gonna have to say specifically no, right? Like, I'm assuming that these are all, they, they looked at what all these things cost and.
So the, the presentation, they, they did have uh, uh, approximations for, for each item. And as I believe, like uh, Commissioner Joseph said, these were just starting points based on assumptions of inflation. And I don't think we are at all discussing the size of the pool. This is more of a framework of, of vision of what then the next commission or the staff are going to do going forward. And anything that goes in front of us, we would still vote on.
So, so exactly, you, you, exactly, I understand. But the vision, perhaps, that vision could say, okay, we have the top of the line, we have the intermediate, and we have the, the, the cheapo, right? So, you put a number to it. He could have presented the vision without a number. Now, if you put a number be- behind that, I need to understand the math behind it, right? How he got to that. Obviously, there's inflation, there's other considerations, but forget about that. He put a hu- a number of a hundred and ten million dollars. Now, I need to understand how he got there. And then, talking about the vision, we also need to take into consideration not just one option, which is the top of the line, but also look at different options of having a small, smaller changes, et cetera, et cetera. So that's, that's where, that's where I'm coming from.
Aren't we past this already, though?
Yes, I, I believe so as, as well, but go, go ahead.
I, 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 we're not past this because I, I did request it last time. We did discuss it and uh, it, it was not. Yeah, so I, I think we should defer it because this is something that I think we need to get it.
Well, if I may, yes, please go ahead. Um, first of all, not only about how they got to the hundred million dollars, the whole data is questionable. So I don't, I don't even believe in the data for the, that recommendations of building the pool, et cetera. So, um, the survey, it needed to, around fourteen minutes to answer the survey where the data came from. Um, many teenagers that were told to participate and tell what is it that you want? Do you wanna pool? Do you want basketball? Do you want volleyball, et cetera? First of all, it was not working from your phone. You had to be in the computer to, to answer the survey. So, the data to begin with is very questionable. So I question also the results. So, uh, because for example, one of the recommendations is to build a park in the Winston Tower Park eh, area. We don't own that area. So I don't know how, um, somebody's gonna tell me you should build a park in a, in a piece, piece of land that you don't own. So, that recommendation on its own, I think is very weird. Uh, another recommendation, eh, Sandstone Park was not really any recommendation there, even though there is a parcel very similar to the community center in Surfside. So maybe the place to have a pool, et cetera, should be Sandstone Park and not to destroy Heritage Park to build a master uh, pool and, and all the tubes, et cetera, lazy river, you name it. So, um, I don't wanna give more time to this because for two years, we haven't done anything in our parks waiting for the results of this parking master eh, park eh, recreation master plan, which I call it a parking recreation master disaster. Um, so I believe that is enough the time that we put, enough the money. We paid around one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for these results. Um, that they don't reflect what the people wants for real and what we have, that like the pieces of land that we have. Many pieces of land, they were not even considered in the study, uh, that they should. So, uh, if anything, and we are gonna be forced to vote for this, I'm voting no.
Okay, thank you.
May, may I add something?
Wait, I wanna give everyone a chance. Commissioner Joseph, did you wanna add something?
I did not agree with the Parks Master Plan um, myself, but we have a smart commission. And I said all along that we could have issues in front of us, we could have designers in front of us and plan these things and move along and get things um, built and created more quickly than spending a year on designers and.
We could use a Google form, and I say people what they want. In one minute, then we will have it. We can send a text message.
But at this point also, I'm not looking to go back a year and spend another hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So I believe, I believe that we should, still, these things have to come to the commission. And I, the ideas have to come to the commission. I believe we should at this point move forward and, um, you know, still, we're going to have discussions regarding each park, what the issues would be, and at least move forward and not backwards.
Wait, give Commissioner Viscara a chance. If you wanna give everyone a, a equal time. Did you have anything that you wanted to add?
I, I agree with Commissioner Joseph.
Okay, uh, Vice Mayor, and then I think we need to take a vote.
Yeah, I, I mean, listen, we, we need a Parks Master Plan. Obviously, we cannot be operating um, whimsically for each park because then, you know, it could result in a disaster. Um, so I believe in the master plan, but I think that we should think about it uh, from a range of, of, of different options, you know? If they got to a hundred and ten million dollars, then, you know, I'm sure that, and it's, it's, it's very logical what I'm asking for. I, I think it's something simple where the um, the consultant could go back and look at perhaps something at a lower budget, couple of options at a lower budget, and different type of schematics just so that framework is there and people, uh, future commissioners and, 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 and staff realize that. So I, I think it's something simple. I, it doesn't have to be complicated. And I'll see why not, uh, why we cannot ask the, the, the consultant for, for, for something like, like what I'm asking.
Okay. Let me make a recommendation because I, I, I do think we should pass it. But I also think you're, you're making a fair uh, request, especially if you made it before. Uh, so, uh, how about if we just agree to supplement it with that information after the fact?
Yeah, I would like to, to, to supplement it and amend it, amend the presentation with, with, with other options. I mean, I, we need a Parks Master Plan, we need to get going. I understand um, Commissioner Joseph's frustration, but then again, um, I think that we should get this right. And um, we need to understand, right? They, somebody hands me a, you know, a, a budget in essence of a hundred and ten million dollars, then I, I need to understand the numbers behind that, how they got to that. And um, and that's basically it. I think what I'm asking for is very fair, very logical, and I don't think it takes a lot of work.
So, I, I just wanna ask the city manager, uh, the, the report that rece- that we received has line items. Uh, are, I, I think that what the Vice Mayor is asking for, and correct me if I'm wrong, um, he'd like to just have a better understanding of each of those line items. So, is that something that, that we can do?
Yes, clearly. And the only thing I would add is, all of the numbers that you're referring to were, were estimates in terms of, of the projects. So I know that that's a large number, but it was just estimates. We asked him to revise the, the plan without the numbers so that we can just look at the Parks Plan as, as a whole.
And the longer it takes, the more it'll be. Right, so, alright, with that, I need a motion?
Another thing, like, we've been waiting for these two years. And, and, and we're saying that we need a master plan. We don't need a master plan. Did we ever had a master plan? We have beautiful parks. Our children, my kids, they grew up in, in our parks. So, this was something because we wanna get a certification. So apparently it's wanna check marks, that we need to get the certification of our parking recreation uh, department. So we don't need a master plan. We get elected, the five of us, so we can be that link between the staff and the people. So we know what the people want. We know, you knew the people needed a tennis court. I know the kids need a basketball court. So each one of us is, like, we are very diverse. Eh, eh, we come from different eh, eh, cultures, backgrounds, et cetera. Eh, our children as well have different ages. So, we have a, we're a very good representation of the city of Sunny Hills Beach. We know what the kid, what the people want. At, at least, I, I go to the beach, I go to the pier, I go to the playgrounds because I have small children a- as well. So, I do talk to the people. One thing in common that they all have when I talk about parking recreation, they wanna see better bathrooms. Our bathrooms are, are, are really disgusting. And uh, so we're spending, we're thinking about spending a hundred and ten million dollars building a water park when the, when we, our bathrooms are very difficult to go inside. So, I just don't understand where are we putting our priorities. We do not need a parking recreation master plan. We want it, we pay for it, we put two years on it, and still now we wanna put more time, eh, probably more money because the consultant is not gonna give us those numbers probably for free. So we are gonna put more money, more time in something that we want. Be- because there's a difference between wanting and needing. We don't need the master plan. We are the master plan. We can make the decisions. We know what the people want. So I, I don't think we need it.
Okay, alright, so I, I think that we, e- everyone is, is, is clear. So I, I wanna be able to move on because we have a, a long agenda. Do I have a motion for this?
I will make a motion.
Okay, I need a second?
Oh, second with the supplement that the Vice Mayor requested?
Okay, so, uh, we, we don't need to amend the actual resolution for that if there's a consensus to, to get additional information?
If it's part of the motion for the resolution, we can add that language thereafter. Obviously, we're eh, not gonna add it right now. We may need some specificity with regards to supplementing, um, and I don't know that to what extent there's a cost to that.
Anything you ask a consultant to go back and do, he's not doing it for free.
No, but I, I think that, that what the Vice Mayor is asking is not necessarily, you know, it, I think that's something that manager is able to do by, based on the information that he already has. Otherwise, I, I, I'm not comfortable adding more money.
And time.
And for the.
We kinda get back.
Right, so.
So if you want it to be part of the resolution, we could definitely put that in there to the extent that it's, that it includes the city manager providing additional information. Anything more formal with that, we can draft it any way you'd like.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, I mean, eh, eh, I don't think it's something that is complicated and that the consultants should charge us extra for, uh, given that, uh, the consultant charges.
I, I think the city manager could, could figure it out. We have a motion right now. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye, but with the supplement.
As amended.
As amended, any opposed?
No.
Okay, next item, please.
Ten D is a resolution ratifying the waiver of competitive bidding procedures of chapter sixty-two of the city's board ordinances, ratifying the expenditure of budgeted funds for the purchase of a four-by-four Ford F-one-fifty from Gus Machala Ford.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission, this was a vehicle, a truck that we bought last year for the Parks Department. And we need to ratify the purchase for fifty-two thousand five hundred dollars.
Do we have any public speakers, Mauricio?
No ma'am.
Okay, are there any comments from the commission?
No.
Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
I need a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Ten E is a resolution authorizing the expenditure of budgeted funds for the purchase of two vehicles from J. Allen Fleet.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission, this is authorizing the purchase of two vehicles for our Parks and Rec Department in an amount not to exceed eighty-nine six nine eight.
Mauricio, any public speakers?
No ma'am.
Alright, any comments from the commission? I'll need a motion? Alright, any comments from the commission, I'll need a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Ten F is a resolution awarding invitation to bid number twenty-four oh one oh one for carpet and floor maintenance services. And approving agreements with Jumap Multi Services LLC as a primary bidder and Green Facility Inc. as a secondary bidder.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission, this was a bid that we put out for our, uh, carpet and floor maintenance. Throughout our facilities, and this was the lowest responsible bidder out of nine responses.
Thank you, any public speakers, Mauricio?
No ma'am.
No, but at this time, I'd like to add one item, uh, that I mentioned at the workshop regarding the turf. At Pelican Park, where the, uh, vendor was supposed to, um, come back to us with additional. Information regarding his product, and he never did.
Mayor?
Yes, please.
Yes, Commissioner, we did reach out to them, and I've explained to them that. We will not be installing that turf until we have that information, so we're waiting for that information.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alright, next item?
I'm sorry, we didn't get a motion.
I thought we did, gen- alright, I, let's, motion? A second, alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item.
Next item is ten G, a resolution approving a third amendment to the agreement with the amusement source for event rides rental.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission, this is our third amendment for the agreement for amusement source which provides event rides. For our different, um, events that we have throughout this, the city.
Any public speakers?
No ma'am.
Any comments from the commission, I'll take a motion? Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Ten H is a resolution approving an agreement with Valrose Investment Group doing business as awnings by Valrose. For replacement of the shade structure and the addition of window awnings at the City Hall Annex.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission, this is for the replacement of all of the awnings at the City Hall Annex. Formerly known as Tony Roma's, we did go out to bid for this. And we ended up with Valrose awning. I also had questions about the warranties for the awnings and the awning, the canvas is ten years. The workmanship is one year, and then we were able to negotiate. Uh, additional five-year warranty for the powder coating on the structures. Which was a question that came up during our meetings.
Great, thank you, do we have public speakers?
No ma'am.
Alright, um, any comments from the commission, I need a motion then?
Motion.
Second?
So, uh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, next item.
Ten I is a resolution approving the selection of United Healthcare as a provider of employee health insurance. United Healthcare as dental provider. IMed as a provider of vision care, Metro Loveoma as a provider of life insurance, accidental death and dismemberment insurance. Long-term disability insurance, voluntary short-term disability insurance, and voluntary life insurance for a period of one year.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission, after much negotiating back and forth with our, um, different insurance companies. Our initial request through Cigna was for thirty-five percent increase. So we ended up, we're recommending a switch to United Healthcare at nine point eight five overall.
Thank you, any public speakers?
No ma'am.
I would like to just mention something that, uh, there was a Zoom meeting this afternoon, um, where, uh. It was mentioned that there's a cutoff date for, um, applying for the new, uh, United Healthcare Insurance of March first. If you don't apply by then, uh, you have to wait one year or wait for, for a special, um, allowance to be admitted. So please, every, uh, city employee who is accepting, uh, who is on the current Cigna, who's. Uh, looking to switch to United, please, um, uh, get in touch with, uh, the city. And make sure that you're on the website prior to March first to be included.
Alright, thank you for that reminder, um, I need a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Ten I is a resolution approving the schematic design of the property located at five hundred Sunny Hills Boulevard, known as Bella Vista Park.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission, you had previously approved establishing our marine patrol at the Bella Vista Park. And this is the schematic for the design and the construction of the. Structure as well as the docks.
Thank you, do we have public speakers?
No ma'am.
Alright, do you have any comments from the commission, I have a motion, please?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item, please.
Ten K is a resolution declaring zoning in progress relating to the mixed-use resort district, town center district. Neighborhood business district and business overlay district.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission, this would establish and declare a zoning in progress.
Okay, so we have any public speakers?
No ma'am.
Okay, any comments from the commission, I'll take a motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item, ten L?
Ten L is a resolution expressing support of Florida Senate Bill seventeen sixty-four relating to car racing penalties.
Okay, so this is my item, um, basically, this is in support of, um, legislation that's right now. Uh, in Tallahassee, this is, um, we're supporting an item by a commissioner, um, commissioner, by Senator Pizzo. Uh, many residents have expressed, uh, their, their concern about the. About car racing, um, uh, people overtaking the, the streets, uh, so on and so forth. This has been a problem, as you, if you haven't experienced it yourself, you've certainly seen it on the news. So I just wanna clarify, when we're supporting items that are bills in, uh, in Tallahassee, we are just supporting them, we can't. Uh, regrettably, we can't enforce them, uh, because we are preempted by the state. So every time we do this, we're just giving our support, um, which, which does make a difference, um, and that's what this is. Any public speakers?
No ma'am, right.
And I'd just like to add, this is similar to the street takeover, uh, ordinance, um, or, uh, bill that. Um, we have, and, uh, this would be quite helpful to, uh, our police department.
Okay, I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item?
Ten M is a resolution expressing support of Florida House Bill six twenty-nine relating to the Florida Women's Historical Marker Initiative.
Okay, again, this is a bill that's in Tallahassee, um, and I think it's important as a body that we support our representatives. This is, uh, being sponsored by Representative Fabian Basavy. Um, this is basically, and especially as we're going into Women's History Month, um, the, the mile markers throughout the state. Would now include more, uh, notable women, um, in, uh, Florida history, basically what it is. Any public speakers?
No ma'am.
Any comments from the commission? Need a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, next item?
Ten N is a resolution expressing opposition to Florida Senate Bill six eighty-four and Florida House Bills two sixty-seven. Relating to the standards and timeframes for the issuance of building permits by local governments.
Hi, Commissioner Viscara, it's yours.
So, um, this is a bill that, something very similar to one that was, um, presented last year, that, uh, failed last year. And that we're opposing again this year, and for us, it would, um, the impact that it would have on us is would. It's just basically people who have no idea what it's like to live in a vertical city, deciding how we should handle our, our permitting. Uh, it already did one committee where it, uh, succeeded five-three, and it's now in its second committee, there's three. So, uh, hopefully, we can put a stop to it, and I'm asking that we oppose it.
Wonderful, thank you, do we have any public speakers?
No ma'am.
Any comments from the commission?
No.
Alright, would you like to make a motion on your?
Motion to approve.
Okay, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Ten O is a resolution expressing support of Florida Senate Bill eleven seventy-eight relating to the governance of condominium and cooperative associations. And the practice of community association management.
So, uh, this is also, uh, for me, and it's, um, um, a bill, it's called generally the, the condo or the condo association bill. Uh, it is, uh, bipartisan, it's, uh, Senator Pizzo, who is, who represents us, uh, is, um, one of the. Uh, senators pushing it forward, it's doing very well, uh, it's, it's passed unanimously in its first two committees. And there's one more to go, uh, and what this would do is give, uh, the DBPR gr- broader jurisdiction. Create greater accountability for bad HOA boards, so you know how there's no shortage of those stories here? Will actually have a place to, to send those complaints where they may actually have a chance of being resolved. So this addresses a lot of the issues that we have inside our buildings, so I'm, um, um. And the Florida League of City supports this, so we're, um, asking that you, we support it as well.
Do we have any public speakers?
No ma'am.
Okay, can I get a motion?
Yeah, um, I, I make a motion, but this is one, it's really important.
It's extremely important.
Especially for areas like Sunny Hills, where around ninety-five percent of the people here live in some sort of condo association. Or homeowners association, et cetera, this is gonna give more teeth to the DBPI and more tools, actually more money as well. Uh, for the, for them to have more, um, tools to protect us. So I think it's really important, I'm so happy the way it's going.
Me too.
And I want, I want, I wanna really support this, yes.
The, the DBPI, actually, I met with the DBPR when I was in Tallahassee, and while they can't ask us, right? They, they, they have to do what they're told by, you know, so they can't really tell us, like, we need you to do this. But they went through the trouble of printing the, the, the bill for me, and it's like, you may wanna read this. Well, I, I. Like, okay, I know what that means.
I went to them after being with, with Senator Piso, and I told them, don't worry, like, I'm gonna do as much as I can to move forward.
Send your emails, send your emails, and then we'll have a resolution to support it.
We have a, uh, motion. Okay, so second, and, uh, yeah.
And you have our support, wholehearted support.
All in favor?
Aye.
I, I, and I just want to, uh, recognize and, and remind everyone how important it is. To participate and recognize that, you know, Commissioner Viscara was in Tallahassee, Commissioner Stuvinson was in Tallahassee. I was in Tallahassee, I think all of us here have taken turns going there, and this is, again, uh. Everything that we do here i- is obviously very important for us locally, but a lot of the things that, that, um, the community needs. We can't accomplish here, and so that is why we go there to, to, uh, advocate for these sort of things and agree, this is an important one. Okay, next item.
And my last one, and then after this, I need to make a comment on the, on.
Okay, go ahead.
We're gonna proceed with, beyond this, um.
Before we move there, can I read the title?
Mauricio, how about I let you do your job?
Ten P is a resolution expressing opposition to Florida Senate Bill four seventy-two and Florida House Bill six, five sixty-nine relating to the sovereign immunity.
Go ahead.
Again, we had something similar last year, and it failed, and it was ridiculous, this year is less ridiculous. Um, and it passes first committee, but apparently, behind the scenes, there was some epic battle. And it took a big hit, and maybe it won't be moving this year, so we'll see, but we're still gonna oppose it. Um, because again, it's the state determining what, what our limits in lawsuits might be. And how lawyers can manage their fees even beyond, um, the settlement amounts that are approved, so. Uh, that should not be their business, it's ours, and so we oppose it, and for that, I make a motion.
Wait, wait, do we have any public speakers?
Sorry?
Okay, uh, motion, I need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Okay, so before we move on, I just, uh, we brought this up in the workshop, um. The, part of the legislative, did you wanna talk about that, Stan, or you want me to?
I'll defer to you.
Thank you, um, part of the legislative program that we wanted to do this year, like, we had the, the, um, town hall with the, um. Uh, local voices, and we had Senator Pizzo come over, and, uh, that was, uh. So we want to, the city to do email blasts or maybe social media posts in support of particular, um, um, pieces of legislation or bills. But we, it, they're not gonna be just random, and we didn't talk about, next year, we'll do it at the beginning of the session, but we didn't do that this year. Because this is the first year we're doing it, so, um, we wanted to limit it to bills that are either home rule. Or that are bipartisan, and/or bipartisan, right, that way, it's, it's, that should, I think, be pretty much all of these, I don't know if, if. Like, the, um, the one that we did for the veterans and homestead is not bipartisan, so I wouldn't include that, but we're still free to support that individually. But as a city, we stick to home rule or bipartisan support, and that should keep us in uncontroversial waters. So that would be my recommendation, so that then Stan can send the emails, uh, without having to confer with us individually.
Okay, so, uh, I don't see, um, Mr. City Attorney, is there eh, anything that we have to vote on here? The, the city manager can send those emails?
No, you don't necessarily need to vote on anything, you're just giving the city manager direction.
Right, exactly.
But I don't agree with that they need to be bipartisan, because that they are from one party or the other, doesn't make it, eh, less good or bad. So I, I, I don't wanna involve the politics on this.
How about this, if I can make a suggestion, we, we give the city manager the ability to, to make that determination based on him being able to. To do the work of the city, so whatever it may be.
Yeah, yeah.
Are you okay with that, Commissioner?
I'm fine with that, and frankly, because it's so late in the game. It's not gonna be that much.
Next year, probably, but, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, next item, please.
Next item is.
Thank you, Commissioner Viscara.
Q, a resolution approving appointments to the Historic Preservation Board for calendar years twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
Uh, Mayor Commissioners, um, this board serves, or was created under separate section of the code than the. Normal committees were, um, this is specifically because this board serves a very specific function. Where, um, in order for the city to be able to maintain the jurisdiction over his, its historic properties. It needs to have a functioning board, um, so every two years, uh, the appointments are up. Um, two years ago, uh, several persons were appointed to this board, and they expired on December thirty-first of this year. Um, one of the provisions of that code is that, uh, it'd be a seven-person, um, person board. With each commissioner having one appointment and then two appointments at large. I sent an email to the commission a few weeks ago, um, explaining what the process was gonna be for these appointments. And I, at that time, recommended that you each have one appointment, and that you allow me. The liberty to be able to make a recommendation, subject to your approval, obviously. And in order to do that, and to make the process a little bit more transparent, uh, we opened it up to the public for them to submit applications. So based on that, and at this time, and then also in addition to that, um, in order to avoid any confusion. Because we had a little bit of that last year when we were trying to appoint the other previous committees. I'm going to respectfully ask that you all each, uh, publicly say who you are going to appoint. So that we have it clearly on the record, and then I'll give you my, my recommendations.
Okay, do we have, we don't need public comment first?
Uh, we have no public speakers.
Oh, alright, okay, so, uh, Commissioner Viscara, do you wanna start? Or do you don't have, do you wanna go fast? Do you know who you want?
Yes, uh, no, my appointment is Igor Vasili.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
Mine is Uriel Rubinovich.
Liz Morales.
I wanna hear everybody before I say mine, because it's gonna depend if you make it or not, so, so.
Okay, uh, that's, that's no problem, alright, my appointment is, uh, George Bednister. Okay, now you have?
No, I need his appointment.
Okay, mine, okay.
Does, uh, George live in the city, by the way? I know he has an apartment here, but isn't he a Washington attorney?
This, could we, this is not what we're talking about.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, um, one of my appointments is gonna be Warren Stam, and I'm gonna take the liberty also to request at the commission. Uh, not only just accept that appointment, but also make him the chairperson, the reason for that serves two purposes. One, it's, uh, a comment that the Commissioner Joseph had made at the Tuesday workshop. Where we have a need for continuity based on some projects that we have on the books already. And then the other appointment will be, uh, Maxianovich.
Great. Okay, um, alright, and eh, given that I make this election for the chair. Uh, I'm making this election based on your recommendation for Warren Stam.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, I need a motion? Uh, second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, alright, so now we are on the add-on items, but we don't have anything, so please, uh.
We do have those, the ones that, um.
Right, I, I don't have any papers, what I'm saying, so, okay, so what is your first add-on item?
Okay, so regarding the, um.
But wait, so let me just stop you for a minute, do we need a number for this, or, or okay?
Excuse me, I'm not really clear on what exactly the add-on items are, if they're actionable items. And if they are actionable, then we would need also public speaking.
But if they're not voting items, then we don't need, okay.
Okay, so the first one, first one is not, the second one is. So regarding the state of the city, there were, um, there was a speech given. Uh, by video by the mayor, but at the end of the presentation, there were no credits given. To people who had input into, um, certain items on the state of the city. of the city where there were um uh certain um changes made to um sewers or to um improvements in software or um to uh red light cameras, let's say. So I would like to at this time give those credits to the people who put those efforts towards having those things be possible. So regarding the IPAL, which was a a uh unity between Aventura and Sunny Isles and the uh police departments, I would like to accredit to Commissioner Jennifer Viscara and also for the red lights where she had a major input into that. For the human trafficking and the with the uh schools with our K through eight, I would like to thank Fabiola Stivison. And for um Alex Lamas, Vice Mayor Alex Lamas, continuing efforts with the senior roundtable, I would like to thank him. Um I actually um uh started the um conversation regarding scooters in uh February of twenty twenty-three. Um I had presented to Val prior to her leaving. Um the uh ordinance from the city of Denver, Colorado, which uh she had worked on but then left. Hopefully, I I think she may have left it in Alan's hands, I'm not sure. But anyway, we had then uh Commissioner Viscara and Mayor Svechn um come into the fray and bring that back up. And that finally got passed, so I I thank them for that. Um regarding the uh carbine, which um in August of twenty twenty-three I discovered that there was no GPS connected to the non-emergency nine-one-one. And I brought that to the attention of our chief um Santiago. And he along with his um lieutenant came up with the carbine software, which now is integrated into our uh PD system and hopefully will save lives um. With GP a GPS link um that connects to uh people's cell phones. Um also, I um had pushed for uh the uh the reworking of ba- of certain bathrooms at the beach areas and um I understand that uh those are now being worked on. And in Golden Shores, on uh the rainiest of days, I drove around taking pictures of areas that flooded. And um prior to the paving of the streets, we had additional sewers added. And uh we now have streets that don't flood, even with the with the old pumps um in place. So um that is uh um also, we have some credits regarding the accounting department. I would like to thank Tiffany and Stan for his efforts as well as Audra, who is now no longer with us, she retired. And I thank them for that. And that leads me to my next item. So on Aug- on uh February first of two thousand twenty-four, we had a Miami-Dade League of Cities dinner which had been um worked on for months prior where the cities of Sunny Isles Beach, Golden Beach and Aventura would um kick in ten thou- approximately ten thousand dollars per city um at where the dinner was held at the Aventura Hilton Hotel. Um at that time, um it was requested that whoever was going to attend submit um that they would be attending. Um I did not see who it was that would not be attending, but um upon arriving, I was told that the mayor was not there and the vice mayor was not there. And um that the mayor had given instructions that no one from Sunny Isles should speak at the dinner. The um mayors of Golden Beach and Aventura each had ten minutes of time to tout their uh city's accomplishments for the twenty twenty-three year. And um I spoke with uh Richard Cooper, who is the president of Miami-Dade League of Cities. And I convinced him to allow me to speak, even though we were not um it was uh we were told that we would not be allowed to. The the fact that we put up so much money towards this dinner and the mayor gave instructions that no one should speak and uh our time be given over to the city of Aventura, who in place of our time played a juggling video to our city's embarrassment with vice with uh Commissioner Viscara, myself, uh Fabiola Stivison, Stan, sitting at the table along with uh Chief Santiago and um Susan Simpson. Uh it was quite an embarrassment. This is not the first time that the mayor has embarrassed the city.
All right, stop.
Please, I have to continue.
No, you don't. I'm, no, no, excuse me, I.
I asked and I was given permission to continue.
No, 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 no. I I'm going to stop you.
No, because I I'm.
We follow decorum.
No.
We follow decorum here.
Place to take over my time.
I will give you your time, but you are you are going to be cordial. We do not attack each other on the dais.
Not an attack.
You can't rephrase, you can't rephrase.
Yes, this is not an attack. This is not an attack.
You need to use factual information and it's not factual. So you may go ahead.
Yes, so.
But don't go overboard.
Again.
I'm giving you a lot of rope.
In April of twenty twenty-three, there was a um race at Gulfstream that we received and you have the papers in front of you from um Gulfstream. We were asked to attend to um represent the city to um give an award to the winning horse of the Sunny Isles Beach Race. I was asked as vice mayor to attend and to co-offer the award to the winning horse. Um before that uh race occurred, I was told that also I had uh Mayor Viscara and our children at the race. Um they were interested in also having a photo op with the winning horse, which I'm going to get to that that never occurred. Uh halfway through the luncheon, we had someone from Gulfstream come over to our table and say that the mayor decided that she wanted to make the presentation by herself and that the children would not be allowed to take a picture with the winning horse. I that seemed very absurd to me and we hadn't, we had had in writing that it was going to be a co-sponsored presentation. Otherwise, I would not have um put the children through that and brought them with the um idea that they would be taking these pictures, which they were so excited about. This was a um just embarrassing for the city, embarrassing for the children and uh total insult. And in that, that was the second time. That was actually the first time, the second time was I'm at Miami-Dade League of Cities. And in that regard, I make a motion to the commission. Where is Alex? He went to the restroom? Okay, so I have to wait.
What is your motion?
I I have to wait for uh Vice Mayor to come back.
No, you don't. You can make your motion.
I'm making a motion for the mayor to be censured for her uh wanton disregard for the city and um and uh poor behavior and um so that this doesn't happen again in the future.
Okay.
Vice Mayor, I've made a motion for the mayor to be censured for her uh poor behavior and um embarrassment of the city on two occasions. And I I make a motion uh for a censure of the mayor at this time. Two, okay, so.
All right, we're not gonna, we're we're not gonna repeat this. Okay, here we go. We we need to stay within the limits of this meeting and not go off on a tangent. So you need a second. Do you have a second?
Do I have a second?
I would like to ask in legal, the legality of your motion or or if there is any base or anything like that. I I never heard about this before, so this is like new territory for me.
Regarding censure?
Yes, whatever the the commissioner uh.
Well, a c- censure is basically just a formal statement of disapproval that the commission, the majority of the commission would have to agree upon. That's that's all essentially it is. Um you don't have anything in your code or in procedures regards to that, it would be treated as a regular motion. Uh but there's no procedure in your code with regards to but generally censure and and most cities don't have that in in their codes either or their charters. Uh it's just a matter, it's it's a formal state. It would be a formal statement by the city commission or majority of the city commission of disapproval. That's all it is.
So in that regard, I make a motion to the commission for a vote.
All right, do we have a second?
Don't. Any discussion about it or any comments before?
Yeah, discussion.
No, 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 no. There's a motion on the table.
Okay.
But we never had a discussion about it either.
He's making a motion.
Yeah, but we never even had opportunity to to
But the majority of the people at on this dais were present at the Miami-Dade League of Cities dinner. So there's really not a need for discussion. It's how it's uh you were present, so you know what occurred.
All right, so I normally I would not respond to to these sort of statements, but I think that it's necessary, given um what I believe are very slanderous remarks and are untrue. So for the record, the league dinner uh did not in in any way advise the city of Sunny Isles Beach that we were able to put together any sort of video. Had they given us that opportunity, of course, we would have submitted something and I understand later on that it was.
It was just a speech.
At no point did I give any direction to say that no one from this dais could speak.
That's very true because we had, Richard came to our table and stated that.
Okay, I don't know what Richard said to you. Richard is not here. This is ridiculous and this is embarrassing for everyone in this room. Um so it is not.
Was at the dinner.
And I and that's really unfortunate and I think that is unfortunate because I think that that was not a very polite thing to do by the other cities because we did not have anything prepared. So I I feel horrible that you all were embarrassed. And had I known, or I'm sure had the city manager known in advance that that's the expectation that they wanted from us, we would have certainly done something in in that regard. So that was not in any way to to be dismissive of anyone on this dais or to make us look bad. Obviously, we wanna look great. And I asked for clarification from the city manager because we are very upset about what happened, if we have paid anything and we as of today. What have we paid?
We have not paid anything to date.
Okay, so.
Ten thousand.
This, at this time, so here here's the thing.
To be a one-third partner.
So here's the discussion that was had with the city manager and the deputy city manager because everyone's very upset about what happened. First of all, that we are not in a position right now to pay the one-third because we didn't have one-third participation. And secondary is to really understand what it is and if at all we would ever participate again. So unless you have something to add, Mr. City Manager?
No, that's, we're still negotiating whatever the rate's gonna be.
Okay.
This has been an absolute um undermining of what actually occurred and we have Jennifer Viscara, myself, Fabiola, Stan, we're all at the table. We could have the police chief if he were here, he would witness, he would be another witness that what you just stated was absolutely not a fact of what occurred.
This, again, look, I'm giving you the information.
That is misinformation.
You can decide to to say that it's misinformation. It is not. So you wanna make a motion?
I'm making a motion.
Okay.
I would like to know whether I have a concurrence.
Okay, do we have?
I'll I'll, it it was very awkward at the Miami-Dade County League of Cities, um but um if it was a miscommunication or whatever, I mean, I I don't know and I'm not in the position to say, but I was also there at the Gulfstream. And that was um, I I would absolutely give a formal statement of disapproval for the Gulfstream incident because that, I mean I I was very, I I really feel that the mayor, you you were you went out of your way to embarrass uh Jerry in front of his family, right? And I I felt really bad for him for that, so I'm.
And not only that, but there was a complaint that was made that we don't even, we were told there was a complaint that we don't even know what that was.
So, all right, I I I think that w- we need to really move on. I.
We don't need to move on, we have to have a vote.
No, I understand that, but let me just say that our, everyone up here, we need to really understand what are we talking about? Are we talking about our egos or are we talking about city business?
Talking about misbehavior.
So here, so here's, look, we had the conversation, we added your items. I want everyone to understand in the audience that because of sunshine, we can't have these conversations uh outside of this uh room, however, it seems like these conversations have happened. Um so in any case, so can we move on? Do we have a second?
I I I was in there in the Gulfstream, uh I did heard about what happened after the fact and people was harmed in in with their feelings. Yeah, it's true. Um so in, but I was in the Miami-Dade County League of Cities and it was very awkward is an understatement, but that's a good word to use. Um so I don't know about the procedure for this. I will make, I will second the motion and everybody else who was there can decide for themselves uh if whatever's the 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 proper procedure.
This is a censure, which is basically a slap on the wrist and so that the mayor is aware that this should not happen again.
All right, so uh Mauricio?
I I I, can I comment?
Yes, you can.
I was I was in that either one of those events, um but if there was a miscommunication, there was some sort of uh misunderstanding, let's say, uh bad ill behavior, wh- whatever it is, but I think that to perhaps correct this and for this not to happen again, I don't understand how it happened. Perhaps we should have policy where if there's only one person there from the city, that person's representing the city, obviously, and has the right to 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 speak. And um I think that should be the policy moving forward. Um and obviously, you know, that person will talk to to staff if uh that person needs to speak and make sure that, you know, they're representing the city uh appropriately. So uh maybe we should talk about some sort of policy to kind of look for a solution so these things don't happen now. Moving forward, if they do happen, then you know, then we 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 should, you know, weigh some of the uh the 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 consequences, but yeah, I think we should have a clear policy so we don't look bad or there's no friction among us regarding those events. Um and that's my, I think that's what we should be doing.
If if I may, Mayor, may we permit it?
Please, go ahead.
Uh Vice Mayor, just in response to your question with, well, your comment with regards to policy, your code does address it in two areas. Uh one in the charter, obviously talks about the mayor and the vice mayor's responsibilities as a sma- ceremonial head of the city. In the absence of the mayor, it's the vice mayor. Apart from that, uh in section seventy-four twenty-three, there's a provision that says that if for you as a commissioner to represent the city, typically the city commission would appoint you to do that. Uh and there's a, so you do have a policy in place. So if typically there's a function, you know, that's going to occur and the mayor is not available or the vice mayor is not available, you as a commission can determine that, okay, since both of us are not available for this upcoming function, then we designate another commissioner to appear on behalf of the city and that person. then we designate another commissioner to appear on behalf of the city, and that person then is authorized to do that.
Okay, so in the case of the Miami Day, uh, County League of Cities dinner, I was not here, I was traveling. So that should have been discussed internally. And a commissioner should be, should have been appointed. And there should have been previous discussion, because I did inform, um, Myra and other people way ahead, uh, that I was not gonna be attending. So I know that our provisions, um, call for me to represent the city if the mayor's not available, which that was the case, but I was not available either. And you stated that we will need to appoint or to vote, the commission would need to.
Right, so the commission can designate someone to act.
How does that designation?
It would occur at a meeting, so how I've seen it done in some cities is there'll be a calendar, so I think League of Cities is pretty predictable, it's the one they have their events. So if you know what's upcoming, there's an agreement amongst you that yes, you know, I mayor, I'm gonna be able to attend then. At that point, if it's discussed and it's determined that both of you are unable to go, then at, at the meeting, you would say, well, in that case, Commissioner Joseph, you know, will represent the city or Commissioner Viscara.
What meeting, at the commission meeting?
At a commission meeting.
No, I think what he's asking if it's, uh, so this happened before this meeting, obviously. So in the past, it would be something that staff would ask, because we can't talk to each other about this.
Right, no, but what I'm, I'm saying is, so you know that, again, predictable events. So you know, next year, the League of Cities is gonna have their luncheon. You know, you typically know ahead of time. And where I've seen it done is cities have a calendar of events that commissioners would like to attend to.
Let's say I, I need to travel, let's say we have, today is, um, next month, there's a Miami Day League of Cities dinner. The mayor cannot be there, I could be there, as of today, right? But in a week from now, I have to travel for work, or two weeks from now. So we got another two weeks before the Miami Day County League of Cities, and we don't have another commission meeting. What happens then?
Your code is silent on that, it says that you all select someone to, um, that you're supposed to select someone to act in, in theirs, in, in.
So, so, so can the selection process be? Look, we don't have a commission meeting, right, two weeks from now? And we need to appoint a commissioner to represent the city, how, how, how does that happen?
Your code is silent on that.
So I, I can.
I understand, so how?
Please, go ahead.
I, I can add a little bit of, of context to this, so every year, if you recall, um, around the March, the city commission appoints delegates specifically to the Miami Day League of Cities. Last year in March, Commissioner Joseph was appointed as a delegate with you yourself as the alternate. So that happens every year, and to Alan's point, um, the commission basically is giving you all the authority to represent the city at these conferences.
At Miami Day County, but if there's other events.
Same thing for Florida League of Cities as well.
And if there's other events, though. This is, I mean, I was using Miami Day County League of Cities as an example, so i- is there something we could do? Because I know our charter is, 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 uh, s- silent on that.
Alright, Commissioner Viscara wanted to add something.
I have a suggestion, okay, so, um, I think we're straying from the motion, but let's just make this point for Alex. Uh, why don't we, if it's, you just take it like, if it's, it goes mayor, vice mayor, right, or if it's the Miami Day, Miami Day County, um, League of Cities, whoever was appointed for that, that, that's special. But for other things, we don't, we don't have that, so it's the mayor, if the mayor's not there, the vice mayor, the vice mayor's not there, then, right, but then there's three of us, right? So I would say whoever, the most recent vice mayor, and then the second vice mayor after that, and you know what I mean? You just gotta go by, by whoever has held the position and, and you work your way down. And that way, it's, there's some hierarchy and, and you can plan around it.
I would agree to do it that way.
Okay, so, um, Mr. City Manager, if you want to put together a policy that we can all discuss in the next commission meeting?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Okay.
Alright.
So now?
I, I call the vote. So let's have a vote.
So can I have just a point clarification for the city attorney? So if there's an actionable item, which this seems to be one, is there a public comment required?
Um, typically, if there's gonna be formal action taken, there should be public comment. There's an opportunity to take a public comment if someone wants to speak, yes.
Okay, um, then in that case, Mayor, uh, we have a public speaker, which is Jody Joseph.
Jody Joseph. Hi, I'm Jody Joseph, one eighty-five sixty, North Bay Road, uh, Sunny Isles Beach. Um, is off? Uh, I'm sorry, closer? Okay, how's this? Um, unfortunately, the invitation slash contract for the Gulf Stream race, which was called the Race of Sunny Isles Beach, unequivocally, that's Sunny Isles Beach, so for someone to say it wasn't a government, um, uh, invitation is absurd. So, uh, Jerry went and Jennifer went, and it said, "family." So of course, we brought our daughter and Jennifer brought her son, and the, um, the five of us were at the table. We were having a wonderful time, and the, um, understanding was, is that Jerry and Jennifer were gonna take a picture with the horse, whatever. Gentleman comes over, Larissa was there, sadly didn't bring any of her children, it was just some people, there was, um, some alcohol going, maybe that was the reason that this had happened. And I do have pictures, I wouldn't say anything, everything I say is the absolute truth, and that's why I'm doing this, because I'm hearing things that aren't true. And this really has to, and this is such an embarrassment to Sunny Isles Beach. Gentleman came over from Gulf Stream, said, "I'm sorry, the mayor said that Jennifer and Jerry are not to take a picture with her, she wants to be in the picture by herself, and she wants to take the award given for herself." With that being said, they didn't care, whatever, okay, let's have the kids take a picture. He said, "Oh, that's more than fair." And it was mentioned that really, she shouldn't do that, he's getting involved in something he shouldn't be getting involved in. Uh, and he said, "I agree, but what am I gonna do, it's, you know, I don't want to start an argument with her." Um, but I think she'll have no problem with the children taking a picture. Long story short, he comes back and he goes, "I'm really embarrassed, I don't know what to say at this point." But she will not take a picture with the children either. And we all know that, is that not true? Commissioner Jennifer, you were there, I'm sorry? Uh, no, actually, if you look into it, plenty of cities do answer. People that don't want to, that's your choice, but commissioners and mayors could absolutely communicate with the residents that you asked to vote for you. That is true. And am I correct, Alan? That some cities do allow that, if they choose to?
That's a choice of the commission.
Thank you. Um, so i- is that the truth, were you there, I mean, the kids couldn't take a picture?
She, she doesn't have to answer, she's already indicated she's not answering, and I believe pursuant to the procedures, they decide how they, how the procedures will take place.
That, that's fine, I just want, she was absolutely there, and the kids didn't take a pic, um, didn't take a picture. And the thing is, you're talking about your guardian ad litem, you could get all these things, take these little courses, but words are cheap. And the fact is, to bully children, that's really, really horrible. And maybe if your children were there, all the kids could have taken a picture. But that wasn't the case, and again, I have pictures of you behind a, um, um, an awning, and the champagne was flowing, but she didn't let them behind Jer- Jerry and Jennifer, and also.
Thank you for your comments, thank you.
And if I may, ten thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Ten thousand dollars.
Thank you.
And I had phone calls from Aventura laughing about what had happened. You made a mockery of the city. Please, Stan, do something, control her so this doesn't happen again. Please don't yell at me, you beg people to vote for you and you're so rude.
I'm not yelling at you, I let you speak, you had your time.
Thank you very much. Treat people more, you know, with more respect and dignity, and be kinder, especially to children.
With you, please sit down.
And I apologize for answering the question before asking your permission.
Mauricio?
That's where, at the end, for citizens forum?
That was in citizens forum.
No, we're on citizens forum.
We had to vote on this.
Oh, excuse me, yes, we do. So, so the motion was made, and I didn't hear a second.
Who was the second?
Second.
There was a second.
A second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes.
Go ahead.
Any opposed?
Yes, obviously.
For the one, thank you. So now we are, is, was, that was it, right? So now we are in the citizens forum.
Formal censure, is that it?
What?
No, you just voted on censure.
We have to vote on, no, you voted on the censure.
You just voted on censure.
No, that was censure.
No, we're voting on a censure.
I, I, I think that we should look at a solution, and then if this is a repeat offense or whatever it is, then, you know, we should look at, um, you know, some, some consequences, but no, I, I, I think, I would withdraw my, my vote.
Alright, so that's three to two, so we, we have people, I think, that are waiting to speak, so I want to move on to the next.
Okay, so Alan, you'll be drafting, um, censure document?
No, this was done as a motion, so you, your discussion is a censure. There's no official censure document that is produced.
Well, there should be a, something on file. Yeah, okay.
No, well, you haven't, you had, there's no resolution. You all made a motion, there's no resolution. You didn't ask for a resolution of censure, so.
Yes, so I, I'm asking now.
Okay, then you're gonna have to do a motion for reconsideration, because that's not what was voted upon.
Alright, so.
It would be in the minutes, correct?
It's part of the meeting record.
Yes, okay, so the censure will be a part of the record?
It's, yeah, it's a part of the record.
Yes, that's fine, thank you.
Public comment?
Discussion, I mean, excuse me, the citizens forum. So now, we call Catherine Katawicz, excuse me.
Hi Catherine, is this your first time here, so please, your, your name and address for the record? My name is Catherine Katawicz, I live, um, half the year here, uh, at one-six-seven-one-one, uh, Collins Avenue, unit three-one-one.
Thank you.
Okay, so I, um, have been having some ongoing problems over the past year. Um, my condo overlooks, um, Jade Signature's pool. And, um, they play the music, um, in their pool all day from seven o'clock in the morning until eleven o'clock. It's gotten a little bit better, because I've been, um, contacting the police department and they, they've been going over there and, um, but they're saying basically there's nothing they can do. That the, um, music should be played at thirty, that, that they have their music playing at thirty decibels, which is supposed to be, um, the limit, um, but it's going on all day, every day, seven days a week. And I think it's a lot louder than thirty decibels, because of how the building is, um, uh, shaped. Uh, I believe that their music is either, there's a speaker either pointing directly at my condo, or it's echoing off of the building and coming into my, um, into my unit. I have repeatedly called them, um, and they have, um, last year was the same song, they, they don't have a different playlist, it's the same four songs that they keep playing over and over and over again. Last year, it was Adele and Adam Levine, literally ten ti- the same songs ten times a day. This year, it's YMCA and Let's Get Physical, ten times a day, from seven o'clock in the morning until eleven o'clock at night. And when I call over there to complain, um, I guess it's retaliatory, I don't know whether it is or not, but a lot of the times, the music goes on through the night. Um, they celebrate holidays, Easter, um, the Super Bowl, the other night, they put up a big la- a big, um, television and are blasting their television, um, whatever they're doing. Easter last year, they had an Easter egg hunt, where they, um, were on speakerphones and yelling. I don't know if you need a permit for that, but I had family in to celebrate my Easter with my family, and with the door shut, I cannot, I cannot enjoy my own condo, I'm paying taxes, I can't be out on my balcony, um, without the anxiety of listening to what they're forcing me to listen to all day, every day, seven days a week while I'm here. I don't know who to contact, um, because the police aren't doing anything. I don't know who I can speak to, um, but I don't want to continue to call the police all the time. You know, and, uh, um, I just need ki- some kind of a direction as to what I can do.
Okay, thank you, uh, I'm gonna make sure that, uh, Myra, if you can make sure, please, that, that we get the information, so that you can meet directly with the city manager and you can get this fixed, that sounds like torture, so I'm so sorry. Okay, thank you very much for, for, for your time and for waiting. Next, next person, please.
Albert Haddam.
Hello?
Thank you, hi. Name is Albert Haddam, I live in Wichita, and I've been in front of this commission before. So on a lighter note tonight, okay?
Not the pier?
Sure, about the pier, but we're gonna put it to rest. So I just wanted to at least thank the commission for giving me the opportunity to speak about my concern about why there are no bikes allowed on the pier. And, uh, Mrs. Stivison, I want to thank you for at least clarifying this. And, uh, I guess rules are rules, so I guess I'm gonna have to walk to the end of the pier now. But at least thank you for giving me the opportunity to, um, as a resident of this city to concern, you know, to voice my concern, and I do appreciate it. And, uh, if you want to LCU to pier, look for somebody wearing a yellow shirt. And if your kids need any extra shrimp, just let me know, I'd be glad to give them. Alright, so thank you, it's put to the rest, and thank you for letting me appear and speaking to you, thank you.
Thank you, next person.
Stay well. One question, because I request to put this item in the agenda like a month ago, but we didn't have the information until today. So I would like to make a comment, it's not answering back, it's just a comment.
Go ahead.
Yeah, um, I got the information about the rules and regulations today. So what I'm gonna do for a resident is that I'm gonna send an email to the pier management company to please allow the people that goes with the bicycle to walk. So it's gonna be a request, they don't have to say yes to me, but, uh, I don't like when certain rules are enforced and other ones are overlooked. So for example, part of the rule is that we don't have, we cannot have animals there. I've been there when the dogs are completely unleashed on their own in the pier. People is smoking on it like constantly, in, in, in cigarettes, not even cigars, that I know we are allowed to smoke cigars, but not cigarettes. So, uh, also they have cage for the lobsters, etcetera, so it's a lot going on there, a lot of rules and regulations that we are not following. Uh, I'm gonna make a request to please allow the people to walk with their bicycles. Um, I never been stuck with my son when he's in the scooter, my son goes with the scooter. So, but he's four years old, maybe because he's cute. But anyway, I'm gonna follow with an email, hopefully we can get something done, I just make it, no promises, okay?
I, I, we, we hear you, a- and I think that Commissioner Stivison made it clear that she's gonna take this on, so, thank you. Um, Mauricio?
And I just want to say, I'll be adding my name to that as well.
Angel Venegas?
Good evening, um, thank you for getting this opportunity to speak. I attended your, uh, this morning, uh, this afternoon's workshop, and, uh, about an hour and a half, kinda interesting. Uh, the subject I actually went to hear about was very, spoke very lightly. I learned more about the First Amendment and religion, which I had no really qualm about, but it wasn't the thing that wouldn't, I wanted to really know is about the scooters and the thing. And what I got out of it is that two hundred people estimated to register their scooters. And we don't know how many scooters are in, uh, Sunny Isle, right? But if I would do some quick math, we have over twenty thousand people. Five percent of that is a thousand people. Two hundred people is twenty percent, that's eighty percent not registered. So let's say five hundred people, okay? That's forty percent registered, sixty percent not registered. And I'm saying to myself, wow, my, the, the law goes into kind of effect and enforce in March, which is two weeks away. Sixty percent of the people are not even registering their scooters, and I go, ask yourself why? Ask yourself that question why? And I say to myself, you know, when I look at all you registered, new requirement. You, you, you soft it, this thing is so soft, like it's a requirement. You know, they used to say, click it or tick it, okay? It's not a requirement, this is a law. And it has to be pushed as a law. It can't be, I know it's an, uh, not popular, and specifically for parents, that this is gonna, you know, they're gonna really, it's not a popular thing. But I didn't vote you here to be popular, I voted you to the ru- do the right thing, okay? So we have to push forward to make people aware, I see it in the thing, it's, it started the law, you must register your vehicle, okay? And that's just my thoughts on it, because I don't get the opportunity to speak to you all at once. I get to speak to you individually, but I had the opportunity to see you, so that was my.
Thank you. Thank you, I, I appreciate you taking the time to do that. Mauricio?
Amelia Karasik?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello, okay, good evening. Um, so my name is Amelia Karasik and I am, um, here representing Winston Towers Master Association Board-
You could just give your, give your address, please.
Uh, my address?
Yes.
Two three zero one seventy-four Street, Winston Towers three hundred. Um, so I'm representing right now, um, Board of Directors of Winston Towers Master Association and also about ten thousand unit owners, um, of Winston Towers community. I was asked by the Board of Directors to bring to the attention of the city administration and commission, very important issue which Winston Towers community currently facing. At the last meeting of Master Association on December sixth, the Winston Towers six hundred president, management and construction company approached Master Association with the request to allow two-way cross-traffic through one seventy-four street from Winston Towers six hundred to the RK privately owned parking lot across the six hundred building. Also, they asked association to remove gate between those two private properties, which means there would be a constant traffic crossing back and forth from Winston Towers six hundred building to RK parking lot near the intersection of one seventy-four street and Collins Avenue, which is a concern for collision and pedestrian safety. At the meeting, Master Association Board of Directors refused to allow any trafficking through the property which belonged to the Master Association and creating any two-way traffic between six hundred building and RK parking lot. Several, several days ago, we were notified that the gate that divided divides our property from RK property was removed by RK. Board of Directors of Master Association would like to emphasize that we did not authorize use of our property. We will be securing our property and reinstating no, uh, no transpassing signs, which were removed as well. Also, we're requesting RK for RK to install a temporary divider to stop transpassing through our property, which does not have a sidewalk, just grass. This is creating hazardous, um, condition to transpasser, transpassers and inability and liability for the Winston Towers Master Association. So, all documents, um, supporting my presentation had been filed with the city of Sunny Isles, eh, as well as, uh, Miami-Dade County. So, we would really appreciate you take this up.
Thank you, I, I think that the city manager's already working on this, so, um, yes, absolutely.
I just, just, they wanted me to present it, thank you very much.
No, and I appreciate that, very eloquent, thank you.
We're concerned with the, uh, safety of, um, your residents, thank you.
Joe Salik?
Good evening. The sound is great? Good evening, uh, uh, Honorable Bishop and, uh, the, uh, dear Commissioner, my name is Joe Salik and I had the opportunity to visit, uh, Mayor and also the, mm, mm, Jennifer, uh, and Mr. Jerry Joseph about the issue that, uh, yeah, put the name of, uh, the, one of the access road to, uh, Mahsa Amini, that was killed in, uh, event, uh, against the, uh, Iranian revolution. If I can read that for you, it's, um, that's the way I just wrote it first, then I, I can read it for you. Ladies and gentlemen, dear commissioners, I stand before you today to honor and honor and mount in, in name of Mahsa Amini, a courageous individual who two years ago sacrificed her life at the at the tender age of twenty for the cause of freedom. Her unwavering commitment makes her a martyr for the noble pursuit of liberty. Today, we propose dedicated a public access road to the ocean in her memory, symbolize her enduring spirit and the path she paved for the freedom we hold here. And in order to understand what I'm explaining, if you kindly go to the Google and find out the, the magnitude of situation that's happening in, uh, in Iran, Iran and against the humanity and freedom. The only thing I just wanna ask that, to remind the name of Mahsa Amini, he, she was martyred for the freedom of women's and, uh, women's right. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, we will absolutely consider it.
Um, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's it.
That's it, okay, so, uh, with that, meeting adjourned, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.